...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fellow board members and cabinet and a whole host of administrators, welcome. Welcome to the board meeting today. I don't think I have to even address unscheduled audience participation yet, so we'll let it fly. Heather, how about attendance?
President Bailey?
Here.
Vice President Delapagro?
Present.
Secretary Shaker here. Professor Bailey?
Here.
Rusty Griffin?
Here.
Rusty Foster?
Here.
Rusty Cancer?
Present.
All present, awesome. Any changes to the board agenda?
None.
The consent agenda is before you in your package. Would someone like to make that motion? Please, Chad.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Alright, is there support?
Support.
Heather had support, thank you, Dan. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Principal Stephen Wolf presenting to us from the high school. Mark Steppich. Everybody behave.
Second person from the computer, is that okay?
Yep.
Thanks for having me. So, we'll jump in here. So, we pulled a few items for you from the high school regarding last school year and then what we're aiming at doing this school year as a result. So, we'll start first with our data. So, we give out a survey each year to our parents, to our students, to our staff. So, we aggregated that data and came up with some plus deltas and some themes. A number of questions, fifty-seven questions. And so, relatives, the number of people who fill out this survey, you can definitely find yourself getting really deep into the weeds. So, we tried to summarize some themes and pull those out for you. So, some of the pluses from our parent survey, which you'll find are pretty aligned to both our staff and our students. They feel we offer a variety of activities and courses, different programs, obviously. They feel informed and encouraged and engaged in school-sponsored activities. And if their student has a problem with an academic situation or a personal problem, even they feel like there is someone there for their child to get support and help from. Some of the deltas, some of the opportunities to improve. A higher percentage of staff feel that their student does not receive the support for the academic and career plan. So, the good news is that behind that, we put a person in place, Laura Farwell, who's been the district firm model as our career navigator. And so, part of Laura's job is to work with counseling, also administration, links and butts as well from CTE, and that is to get kids really engaged, furthering their educational development plan. That's a larger scope of really the Michigan Career Development Model, the K-12 model, which really has students find out what their strengths are individually, what their skillsets are, their talents, their interests, their career interests as well. And the tool we use for that is called NAVIANCE. So, if you're a parent district, you're pretty familiar with that program, hopefully. We had some pickups getting folks logged in, but we're good to go. So, that partnership between Laura Farwell, our teachers now, who in their classrooms are going to begin connecting some of the subject area content with potential careers and student interests from what they're placing into NAVIANCE that houses their personal information is an action that we've already begun planning prior to this school year. So, we feel pretty confident about that. Another area for growth for us is the feedback on academic performance. And so, you know, part of that is the expectation of the building, our academic expectation, whether it's in writing from our staff handbook or some of the reminders embedded in the conversations we have with teachers, not just around updating a grade book bi-weekly, but you give a quiz, what is the conversation like to students surrounding those results? How do students improve from their results and help drive where we focus our specific support for them? And the stat phrase that we all use, we differ from achieved for kids. So, we have quite a bit of opportunity for improvement there and we've begun some planning for that. Another piece which again ties to that first bullet point as well, the delta point, is connecting learning to the real world. And so, in CTE, it is essentially a requirement now to document and record students' reflection in those CTE courses of what career opportunities are there. And they're naturally embedded into the courses themselves. So, it's kind of easy, but you can house that now with NAVIANCE. And then you can connect that to the other data that students are filling out in their EDP to present a clear picture for students and parents of, well, where might I want to go beyond my ninth grade year, my junior year, my senior year, or even college applications, or even some of the industry experience I can jump into right out of high school. For our non-CTE, our core classes, we are also going to begin each semester, staff digging into connecting their subject area again to some of the career world. If you are in certain content areas, it's a little easier than others. Math can be difficult in the pre-calc, for example, but there are still indeed quite a few classes where you can connect them to the real world. And we're going to have our teachers present that to their students, which about forty-five percent already do that. But more important, students documenting that into NAVIANCE to paint that overall clear picture for both them and their parents to see, okay, what are we going to do with this? How is this going to help us guide our post-secondary plans? So, that was the parent survey data. The student survey data, some aligning themes from what we pulled from there. Some of the positives, again, they also feel like they can go to help, go to someone for help for a school or a personal problem. Again, we offer a variety of activities and courses. They feel very aware of the safety and security procedures in the building, which certainly makes us feel good. That's our first job at the high school level. They also feel like our staff treats them with respect, care, and of course, about their success, both in the building and outside the building. So, some opportunities, some of the deltas that we pulled away. Higher percentage of students felt like there aren't necessarily high expectations set for the learning standards for all students across the board. And a part of that is staff articulating here what our clear expectations are. We call them learning targets in some of the classrooms of, here's how we're going to tie this into the assessment, here's what we want you to know, how we're going to measure it, and then how we're going to build off that, which is again the feedback we give kids after some of the quizzes or the assessments or the grades that we enter into the real world. Again, part of that is built into some of the expectations that front office and administration carries on for our staff with them. Again, another theme that pulls out, how do lessons relate to life outside of the school? Students felt like there was an opportunity for us to get a little bit better with that so I can mimic what I said a moment ago about some of those plans we've begun working on even last year. And then students feel like they don't necessarily have as much of a choice in what they want to learn and engage on with some of the hands-on activities. So, that is something that I think we take pride in what we do, but are we intentional in bringing that out so students can see it and they feel like there's choice? Some things that we've begun working on really last year and even fairly more this year are some of our IB practices, whether they're some of the global context that they refer to it as, some of the ATLs and the approaches to learning, and then of course, the big one, which are really similar to the ATLs, the portion of a graduate characteristics. And these are competencies and skills that we do, we have done, but are we intentional in naming them? Are we bringing attention to them so students feel like they understand and then they can make some choice with them? And that, of course, is built into some of our professional development this year for staff. Staff survey, most feel that their colleagues can support students when they have a need. Again, identical and similar theme across the board. Ninety-four percent aware of the safety and security procedures. Most feel school is safe. And most staff feel the instructional activities of the building professional development were effective. So, that again makes us feel good in the front office for our support and their instructional growth as teachers. Higher percentage of staff felt like their colleagues can improve on again setting higher expectations for all students. Doesn't necessarily mean we dig into the actual question, though we don't set high expectations, but high expectations clearly visible that we're revisiting every day about our targets and what we want kids to know and how they're going to go about measuring whether they know it. That's again more the intentionality being clear with our student. It's there, but are we clear and intentional with it? So, we have some improvement on that. Again, going back to our expectations for our instructional staff at LA School. An area that Kirk Christie Jordan and I can improve upon, being available, the staff as a concern, we may not be accessible because there's an emergency or we're tied up or want a class observation, then what's the order of operation if we can go to get support? The four of us can't be in all nooks and crannies of the building at every single hour of the day, and we're often off campus at the board office or today at OVA, but the staff know who they can access for support, if it's an emergency, if it's a minor need, et cetera. That's the communication that we're working on right now with the front office amongst the four administrative staff. Discipline isn't always enforced fairly. Part of that is our staff's awareness in some of the trends in how we approach discipline. As we've changed our practices in the last two years or so around using alternatives to suspension, some of the restorative practices that we began to embed into the classrooms can still grow building-wide. And so, to generalize, old belief years ago was student was misbehaving, you gave them a first chance, maybe a second chance, then the student is suspended. And it's not as if our staff still feels that is an approach that's healthy and that we should use. A lot of those practices have changed quite a bit in the last few years to keep kids in class. And so, a lot of that is the communication on our end, on best practices to staff, and a lot of the tier-one supports they can use in their own classroom to manage student behavior. So, a lot of that is the communication that we can work on and improve with our staff on what our practices are to keep kids in class. Sending a kid outside of school may get that issue off of the hands of perimeter, but doesn't necessarily get to the root problem and really support the child in learning from those mistakes and growing. And so, part of that is our communication with staff on being clear with, while we didn't suspend this student, for example, there was some restitution and some restorative work and some community service that was, you know, given and provided to that student. So, a lot of that is the communication on our end. That was our building survey data from students, staff, and parents. And this one, I'll do my best to condense Angela, not do a short one, though. Our school improvement plan, a lot of it is explaining kind of the process by which we create this and then live into it throughout the school year and how we measure it and how we know where we're at at any given time, our benchmarks. We always begin the year with digging into our standardized test data. It's not everything, but it's important and it gives us a good starting point on what specific skills our students can strengthen and things we can target to be more intentional with throughout the school year. And so, we do a question or an item analysis within College Board that provides them, our staff, with certain College Board standards to which then we align with our curriculum standards, to which then we get into our subject area teams and start mapping out in our curriculum. Here's the way in which we actually get into some of these skills to measure our curriculum standards. So, we get really intentional and targeted with that planning. And then from that, staff will then begin to create measurable goals and then their student learning objectives. That's the other acronym in there, SLO. How do we know what we're doing is effective? Well, you have to measure that. And then we have to identify best practices or what strategies are going to be most effective in the classroom. And so, that's a simplified snapshot of how that goes from big picture, school-wide, down to department goals, down to subject-specific measurable goals, down to individual teacher slows. Because if we're all rolling in the same motion and in the same direction, then we can support each other and build off each other's practice knowledge, which leads to student growth. And that's basically how that framework works. And we spent several days to start of the year setting that foundation so that when we get into our PLCs, our subject area teams, every other Wednesday, conversations are really targeted around what do we want our students to know? Those are those standards and those skills we're measuring. How are we going to know if or when they know it? Those are some of the assessments, the common assessments that we develop and measure whether the strategies are working or not. And that's kind of a system that we operate on, really almost every weekly. We do get into a bi-weekly rotation after the three weeks or so with staff, where we do a full staff PD on Wednesday, and then the other Wednesday morning, then we meet in subject-specific PLC teams. And so, we also at the start of the year brought our staff through, really, we would call it our IB continuum. And so, in our IB, international lackluster growth as staff, as instructional, really coaches of our students, where are we at in the next level of our learning so that we can become better teachers of that middle-year program framework and in the DP framework and program? So, what we do is we took our staff through staff survey at the end of the year that was specific to IB, where they felt like they were strong, weak, and need help. We also had approximately eleven national trainers come out in June for those who were aware at the middle school to work with all secondary staff to get some real targeted support. We also debriefed with them and got some feedback on where our staff likely to go next in their growth as IB educators. Then, of course, we wrapped our heads around some of the PD we had done in the last two years to really triangulate what's next. What are we going to target in the world of IB and those IB practices and expectations? We also brought staff through the report server graduate, which is really the biggest picture of all. What skills and competencies do we want our kids to walk across the stage with to prepare them post-secondary when they leave the high school? And so, a lot of those skills we build on in our classrooms, but again, the theme here is are we intentional in naming it? Do students know? Are they aware of that? Are they reflecting on that meta-cognition that's such an important level of learning for students at that age? And so, again, to summarize how we build our school improvement plan in the process is we start with the data, we go into the skills, we build that into teams to measure whether it's working or not, to identify what strategies are important. We even step back and look at the whole IB continuum of where our growth can occur at next. And then again, we even take a step further back and we really look at the course of a graduate characteristics. So, we had a good time doing that this year. We all had a big poster that Matt Johnson made for us and we all, we were hashtag all and we signed our names on that. We're going to commit to this. We're going to get better at providing our kids with this level of skills so that they can be successful outside of high school. So, that's our, was that short, Angela? Shortish? Lastly, points of pride. You know, I started off making this slide going, I've got like one or two weeks of school, like what, how much have we actually accomplished? But then jokes on me because it's quite a bit, and it really carries on from the summer because we just really never shut this place down. It's open all summer, it never quits. There may be literally what Mr. Ackman, a two or three week period that we have, if that, for athletics, but even our clubs, they don't even stop. So, we had a fun summer with choir boot camp that actually just occurred, and then earlier this summer, our band camp, which are both at the same location, actually different dates. It's a great time for those kids to build camaraderie, teamwork, have a sense of belonging and belief in what they're doing, and really have a great time. So, too many photos this year. We also have our link group with freshmen at registration, and those students start that planning two or three weeks in advance. They come up in the summer, they map it out, they organize what activities, how they want to get kids engaged, and those kids are in here for half of the summer planning for just when our incoming freshmen come in and do those activities. We want our students as freshmen to feel like they have a sense of belonging and that there are a couple upperclassmen they can go to and connect with for if or when they have any problems or questions, which is really, really big. If you don't feel like you belong and you don't feel positive in your commitment, learning is just far less likely to take place. So, that's a big piece for us at the start of the year, which begins even in the summertime. Athletics, again, it's like where do I even start? I don't want to leave anyone left out, but we brought in Rob Miller, a motivational speaker at the end of the summer, come in and spoke with both parents, and also spoke with our athletes, and just set a great tone for the entire school year that we can build off of. We also had an outstanding senior athlete luncheon just before school started, just before our staff came back. That was fantastic, again, builds camaraderie, makes seniors feel like they're special because they are. They've gone this many years through our athletic programs and they represent the entire district. So, it's really our job to make them feel special because they are. We had a meet the teams night as well that was out at the football field. We had a huge, huge number of parents come out, and again, that honors students. And gives us a chance to say their names, what sports they play, what positions they have, gives a chance also for the coaches and they connect after with the kids and the parents and go over, you know, here are our expectations for tennis, for volleyball, for the season. And it kind of kills two birds with one stone in that sense. In terms of overall teams, we have our tennis team, I think, is four, one and one, doing really, really well. Swim and dive?
Undefeated.
Yep, undefeated. First win versus Lake Orion.
West Bloomfield.
And West Bloomfield, yep. So, they're doing an outstanding job this year, great start. Volleyball, I had a tournament with sixteen, eighteen teams here this Saturday. They came in second place out of all that, so we've had a really, really great, strong start to our athletic season this year. So, that's only two weeks in, maybe technically. So, good thing I didn't go last. So, I'm sure I left quite a bit out, but I was trying to condense and summarize so Angela wouldn't have too many notes there. Last points of pride outside of activities, clubs, athletics, just trying to advertise for the PSAT for our students, it's great practice. And that gives our students some great insight on what improvements they can make on both the PSAT and the SAT, especially for our juniors. So, this is a national merit qualifying test for our juniors to show growth from October until April, which can provide them with a lot of scholarship opportunities. It also allows them to link in that data that they have on their exact test to Khan Academy. That Khan Academy tool can provide them with targeted and specific support to build off their areas of weakness where they can improve on the most on that test when they think they get an A. Our staff has access to that. Our staff takes students from those activities, not too often, but every once in a while when it connects to the curriculum, just to support some of those standardized test tools that we know our kids can work on. For college and career news, we have a lot of college visits approaching, we've been starting this week. And so, Laura Farwell, again, our career navigator, self-helping counseling, communicate those out. So, if you're a parent and you're listening and you're getting these reminders from NAVIANCE, open those up, the tools that are inside and the data it provides you that are specific to your student are outstanding, really, really helpful. And again, that's one of the areas our staff and student and parent data came back and said we can do a better job of, and we now have that tool. Common app as well is something our juniors should be paying attention to, so we're working with our junior class and our senior class, because seniors are about ready to start applying, some have already, that college application process. So, getting juniors familiarized with it, getting seniors ready to use it, send it out, and get ready for next year for those who are going to college. And then EDPs, we're really working hard to get EDPs done and front-loaded at the start of the school year around November-ish, hopefully, because that data allows us to do quite a bit. It allows us to find out what our students are skilled at, what their interests are, what career potential they may have, and that helps in our subject area classes. That helps for them in outside the school day opportunities. It helps them start conversations with their parents, with their counselors, and it goes across the board on helpful information for our students when they leave the high school, what they can do with them. So, we're working really hard to get that data in so we can use the actual, we can use the actual data. Questions?
Any comments or questions? Dan?
I've got a couple. I'm concerned, a couple different things that jumped out at me that maybe we need to focus on as a board. Under the student survey, students asked, pointed out three things. High expectations are not set for all students. Lessons related to life outside of school, and they want more choice in learning and engaged in hands-on or in life lessons and activities. Is that screaming to us that we have a section of our population of students that aren't going to college that want and need direction on how to go to something other than school? And as a board, I think we need to be cognizant of that moving forward. Do you see that as a question that kids are having? When students are coming to the counseling office, are they asking, what direction do I go if I'm not going into college? If I'm going into the workforce, or am I going to the military? Or is that something that's just not on our radar yet?
Definitely on our radar. I think we, somewhat to no fault of our own, we can take responsibility for, we haven't had an official, an efficient tool to use to be able to get specific with kids, other than scheduling a certain length of meetings, which we have done in the past for kids around their EDP or education development plans. But not just as a senior when they're going to graduate and walk off, but as a freshman, which may change, a sophomore, which may change, evolve as a junior, and so on. So, outside of time, we need a better tool, which we now have NAVIANCE, the personnel manage that, Laura Farwell, to pull that data. And one example, which I'm glad you pointed out, you know, we've done EDPs by grade, but we go in the classroom, we said, students, click, 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 make sure you do this as your homework, we're going to check in on it, and it's only surface level. Our counselors are great at clicking and clicking and giving directions, are great at having conversations, are great at helping kids navigate through themselves with their parents on what it is they're good at and what they may want to do. And so, we now have a tool, we can group kids by their career pathways. There's twelve of them versus saying, hey, I'll junior, if we're going to come into English class, and geez, there's probably twenty-five different careers that are interested here in the thirty students in class, and we'll do our best to cover that in forty-five minutes. Where now we can actually group them by career pathways, do our research on it, have people come in from our EDP board with CTE and give some real specific support and help with those kids. So, we're setting the groundwork right now for that. Will we do a perfect job this year? Probably not, but it's a great starting point.
Paula?
Yes, thank you. And my question isn't really to delay blame to say, well, you haven't done a good job or you haven't done this or you haven't done that. I guess my question is if there's something that you want to push back to us to take a look at, because I've had a conversation a couple times with a couple different board members, and I think there's some common feelings on how we want to move forward if we have that opportunity. Unfortunately, the state's really not giving us that opportunity with the funding, but if you can see or give us some guidelines on what we can do to kind of help that process along, it would be beneficial so that when we're looking at budget, we kind of have that in mind.
I think if there's one thing we can do to help on, something for the board or our early on community, is to have the message clear that NAVIANCE and EDPs are not just the next thing, they're a thing that's critical for our students in their planning beyond high school. You know, with so many acronyms and so many new things every couple of years, and of course, the pencil swings back and forth, it's easy, and I'm guilty myself, to say, oh, this two shall pass, and in three years it'll be something else. This hasn't changed, this has been a need for however many years, and we now have this big pain of attention to with the Michigan Career Development Model, and we now at the high school have a tool and a person to help navigate that. So, the place we need help on is having a clear message that, parents, you need to engage into this system NAVIANCE because it is specific to your student and they should really take it seriously. We don't expect every kid to leave as a senior knowing, I want to be a surgeon, I want to be an electrical engineer. They may not know, but they may know for sure what things they don't want to do and what they're talented at. And that helps in the long run when they're twenty-three, twenty-five years old. So, the message that this is important, parents, if you want to dive in. Thank you.
Eric?
I had noticed in the area of improvement section in a couple of those pages, there is a, seemed like almost a common theme that said, provide timely feedback. Can you help us understand what that is all about and how to correct that type of, I guess, behavior?
Definitely. And I don't want to confuse that data point with kids not knowing academically where they stand, i.e. what their grades. We actually, a high percentage of kids and parents felt like that was strong, meaning, well, my kid is a beast for, they're doing pretty well in math, maybe not as well in English. But what's more important than the grade, part of what we're doing is progressing day to day. So, when an assessment is given, a project is done on a lab, let's say, takes place, that the turnaround is quick, so students can now learn quickly from it before they move on to the next set of standards or lesson, and then it's old news, it's history. Part of that is being better with our communication on what opportunities are there for students to ask questions, get help and support. On our staff news and our parent news, every week, we communicate out office hours. And so, if you're a student taking chemistry, there is always a chemistry teacher available, at least one, usually more before school, very much or after. Reviewing a quiz is a practice that we can improve upon, but taking it even another little further, if students come in and get specific, going on one help or in small groups, is definitely an area we can improve upon, for sure. So, timely feedback to know where I stand at this moment in time.
So, how do you do that? You just said update handbook, I don't know, I'm guessing that wasn't for that item in particular, but it seems like difficult to go from, it's almost like changing someone's mentality.
Yeah.
It's hard to do, I don't know how you get there.
We're proposing to extend the school day eight more hours, so as long as can we improve it.
That'll work.
It is a common practice, I think, many if not most of our staff embodying it and they use, but the frequency of it, I think, can increase, but it's our job as administrative staff, and our, what we call And we'll be calling our ILT, our Instructional Leadership Team, which is like our school improvement plan team, to provide some better strategies to do that because we can't create eight more hours in the school day. And we can't expect every kid to get to school at 6:30 a.m. and may not have the means or transportation. So it's professional development alert. So when we say handbook, I don't mean hammer and write in a handbook and then shove that till next year. It's frequently revisiting those expectations. We're updating our textbooks bi-weekly. If you get an email from a parent's 24-hour, you know, response rate to some of those academic practices that are, that are good.
Chad?
So a couple minutes ago, I'm sorry, you said that the counselors not so good at point click, but they're good at conversation, which is perfect, right? Over time, I've heard folks say that the kids don't get enough time, right, whatever enough time is. But they don't feel like they're getting enough time in front of those counselors. So I guess my question to you is, do we have enough counselors in place to really have those good conversations to help those kids, counsel those kids into, you know, where they really fit in life?
Yeah, I'll circle back to Dan's question, then we can use four more counselors. I don't, maybe more.
Budget, Sam? Line item.
Maybe more counselors would help. I think in theory it would more spread across the board for our student body, especially as that's grown, got larger and larger. But I think more important than face time with the counselors, it's intentional time and conversation with the counselors. Because I can talk to a kid for 30 minutes about just general stuff, feel good, feel screwed. But am I giving helpful information about what might need done academically and post-secondary? That's just as important, I think. And if we don't have that data and that information and we can't be efficient with it, it's really hard to space out that face time. Otherwise, you're literally chugging to go 10 and 7 a day, 10 and 7 a schedule. And we can do better than that, so.
Yeah. No, it's a tough problem to solve. I just, you know, I know we've got a lot of great tools in place, but that only goes, you know, so far. I know there's a lot of things that those tools aren't going to be able to do, right? So that's really, that's the root of my question, really.
I will go on record to say, I hope we have more, more counselors now.
Cory?
My question was kind of along the lines of Chad's. I know on the deck that we got, it said, 87% feel there's someone their student can go to with a school problem. And while that is, you know, a high number, that also kind of jumped out to me as there are 13% of our kids that don't feel there's somebody there. And so kind of my question is, is it because of not having enough counselors or a comfort level with how things are handled with counselors?
And that's a great question. It's a tough one to answer, yeah.
I have a question. Yes. When I was reading through the surveys, it was uncanny, the parents and the students' parallels. Were you surprised at all that in the staff surveys, real-world education and the portrait of a graduate didn't show up anywhere as a positive or a delta?
It did, but the percentile wasn't as glaring as the other. So it was. And I tried to focus on just a couple of the big ones that jumped out. So the difference in, you know, percentile, which shows a green, chocolate green, was kind of negligible for the purpose of making the presentation. It was.
No, no, no. Yeah, I figured it was there, but my point is, is that when it's high for parents and high for students, but it doesn't appear high or low for teachers, there's something.
Yeah, and that's not teachers, that's me, and that's our leadership team, that's not our staff.
Okay. I just caught it. So thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mary?
I had a question on the staff survey. On the first bullet, 94% feel there are staff members whom a student can go to the school or personal problem. How many staff do we have in the high school? Okay, so I'm just curious, so based on this number, so I mean, so we're talking six out of 100, that still seems like a lot when it comes to something like that. I mean, I'm just wondering, why wouldn't it be 99? That they would know that there's somebody that a student could talk to. Maybe it was the way the question was phrased, but I would think that that would be something that would be even higher than the 94. You know, I think that's really important because as you talked about, if our students aren't comfortable, then it makes it fairly difficult to learn. So I think that's, I think that's really important piece. And were there any comments on the third bullet point about the building PD? Were there any comments that people had for improvement? At 87%, did people just think that some of it's just not applicable to me, but I have to sit here anyway? I mean, I'm not trying to be rude, but sometimes that happens.
Yeah, I'm a little bit biased. I think the qualitative feedback we've received, Percy, Jordan and I, have been extremely positive in terms of improvements from previous years. So I feel good about that, but we can always, we can always get better indeed. And we've surveyed our staff several times beyond this district level one. And we surveyed them after every single PD. We give them the same rubric and tools to use. And we, please, please fill this out so we can get better. So we can get better, we can get that to 100%. But overall, compared to previous years, I feel good about what we've done and where we're going to improve on this program.
And when you do these, you talked a lot about the staff coming together. I'm assuming that you're giving the weekly meetings that you give room for feedback at that time. I mean, that's a really important piece because we can set the goals, but then if something is really going awry, we don't want to wait till the survey at the end of the year.
Yeah, yeah. I'm glad you mentioned that. Something I skimmed over, trying to condense is, we built a different system this year where our PD is really driven from our school improvement plan. In order for that to happen, we have to have our stakeholders feeling like they're making a daily and weekly contribution. And so we've set more frequent formative conversations with our PLC leaders, with our ILT, our Instructional Leadership Team. So we're more closely checking the pulse of what their needs are so we can provide a specific PD. Because we can give a great PD to 90 teachers in general. But boy, if I'm that bio-med teacher versus the PD teacher, there's a huge difference in what we need. And so part of that is keeping a pulse and connected with those department leaders on PLC leaders. And that's something we designed specifically for this year, exactly with that in mind.
I do appreciate the explanation of all that you, the leadership team, do. Not being from an education background, I'm going to have my, I'm going to, I can't really share with my kids all these things. I know they're really busy and they do all this work, right? And that was a great explanation that I can share with my kids too, to come back and watch it. This is how much time our teachers and administrators are spending on making the best decisions for our district. So I appreciate that. Thank you for all that explanation.
Mr. Trump?
Yeah, just for clarification and reminder to the board, that Career Navigator position, we implemented a full-time position in the counseling office at the end of last year. So we have not had a full year with that additional resource in and working in that office. We had seen, the need kind of had identified that need. We were hoping that we would get some of the Marshall grant money to help fund that. In the end, we didn't get any of that funding, but we still went ahead and said it was high enough priority that the district was going to fund it itself at 100%. So I just, just a reminder, we've made a lot of changes and we haven't been through a full year yet. And so, you know, we're still working our way through it and figuring things out. And I'm sure that we'll have a lot of other changes, additions and movements along the way. So just, just a reminder.
Very good, very good. Last thing, I guess I want to say, just thank you. What a thorough response to the deltas. And so from a high level to all the way to how we make it practical. So excellent. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We're on number five, Board of Education Matters. We have before us a recommendation or motion. Would someone like to hit that? Dan?
Move to approve the Oakland County School Boards Association Resolution as presented.
Is there support? Chad, support, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. From a presentation that we had last week under Curriculum and Instruction, we have the two OVA curriculums. Someone want to make that motion? Please, Heather?
Move to approve the Admin Council, did I say that right? Yep. And Pointful Education Curriculum as previously presented.
Thank you. Is there support? Mary, support? Is there discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Weaver, anything else?
That would be it.
Mr. Barna also has a motion for us on the presentation that we had last week. Would someone like to make that motion? Please, Mary.
Move to approve the sole bid from Pre-Planned Live to install the mobile panic buttons at a cost of $350,900 as previously presented. This project will be funded 75% from the 2019 State of Michigan Safety Grant and the remaining 25% capital project fund.
Thank you. Is there support? Chad, support? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sam, you have a wall-mounted safety kit recommendation?
Thank you, yes.
Can we go right into that motion, or do you have something to?
I do not, no, if you don't mind.
We can slide right into it?
Please.
Dan?
Move to approve the suggested bidder, Pre-Planned Live, to install wall-mounted safety kits at a cost of $42,709.50 as previously presented. This project will be funded 75% from the 2019 State of Michigan Safety Grant and the remaining 25% capital project fund.
Thank you. Is there support? Cory, support, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm thinking you want to talk to us about the purchase of truck.
I do.
There we go.
Yes, so in front of you, in your board pack, obviously was a quote for a 2020 GMC vehicle. And in addition to the vehicle, truck, there was also some snow plowing and salting equipment that I wanted you to be able to review. In the past several years, for as long as I've been here at least, which is over four years, we have been contracting out the vast majority of our salting and snow plowing to district vendors or just vendors in general. And we had a contract recently that lasted the last two years. And we just felt that we wanted more control over this critical function within the district. And so therefore, we are looking to not only purchase this for just mere salting and snow plowing so that we have a better handle on this, but also because we do have an aging fleet of vehicles as well. As you've seen in the documentation that was presented to you, we have a 2005 truck, a 2009 truck, and then obviously the newest truck that you'd have brought approved while I've been here is a 2016 GMC truck. So what this is doing is enabling us to, you know, obviously update our fleet and also provide us the opportunity for additional safety with our district and taking back a portion of the salting again, as well as the snow plowing in the district.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions on that? Dan?
So we're not taking all that responsibility.
We are not, no.
So that'll just be in areas of need, and will we be using the other vehicles in our fleet to, obviously one truck can't do every school in our district. And my follow-up question to that is, are we just using it to plow sidewalks and salt sidewalks? Or are we talking about, you know, the whole lots?
So we are talking about the whole lots in four elementary schools, not including Lakeville Elementary. Lakeville is encapsulated, as you're well aware, within the campus of Lakeville Elementary, as well as, you know, the transportation building and OMS. And so that campus will still be serviced outside of us primarily by outside vendors with heavier equipment. But are able to do, obviously, as you see out here in the summertime, we have the loader and also the attachment that's kept there during the year. That will be maintained, and we will be contracting still with that particular vendor, who isn't the vendor that I was speaking of previously.
Okay.
So we're going to be trying to do this in a situation where we're taking on the majority of the elementaries ourselves with both snow plowing as well as salting, but then still maintaining some relationships with vendors for the larger schools such as OMS and OHS.
Same up question. Will it require additional staff?
It will.
Or are you going to use?
It will. In short, it will. We're looking at the very minimum to have someone come in, possibly in the $15 an hour range, either part-time or full-time. We were thinking full-time. And full-time so that we can maintain that individual for other duties as assigned within the terms of maintenance and operations throughout.
So it wouldn't just for that season?
Correct, correct.
Got it, got it.
And so we're getting, trying to get some benefits, obviously, and trying to educate individuals that we would bring in to learn other things, obviously, outside of the critical function, again, of snow plowing and salting during the winter months. Hopefully, the winter months only. So yes, we're looking to hire potentially one additional person and then have an individual that's currently employed in the district, who is part of Tony's large staff of two, to help out. And then additional, again, possibly pulling some other individuals that have relationships with the district if necessary.
The growth in cost that you showed us on your report was incredible.
It is. And you know, and quite frankly, you know, you can't blame it on one thing, you know, truly. I won't, you know, take blame at the vendor. I'm not pointing fingers. You have to obviously understand, and I'm sure all of you do, that it's very contingent, highly contingent upon the weather. And so as you may recall, the last two seasons, we've had some pretty brutal seasons, in all honesty.
Yeah. Anything else, or anyone else? Cory?
But this is going to reduce the amount of salt. This is also going to reduce the wear and tear on our parking lots.
We hope, so.
And we're going to get snow out where these guys will wait till later in the evening, where with all the swimming and all the other activities, I mean, I couldn't tell you how many times you walk out and there's two, three inches, but it still comes down, so nobody's plowing.
Yes, just it's, we want more control, is the bottom line. And so I think that that would alleviate, we're hoping that that will alleviate many of those issues that we've experienced in the past. But in short, we have a feeling we'd be able to reduce the salt purchases that we make. And then the spreading of the salt, we're hoping that we can do that. So we shall see, depending on what the weather looks like, that's on me, man.
Any other comments or questions? Mary, you haven't spoken yet, go ahead.
I do, I have a self-question.
Yes.
I was just curious if there is a more long-term, cost-effective way than throwing down the rock salt with other snow and ice melting alternatives that might not be so tough on the cement and whatnot? Just curious if spraying would be better?
I won't purport to be an expert on this. What I will tell you is this, what I do know about alternatives to salt are that they are normally more expensive. And depending on the temperature, they could be equally as ineffective.
Okay.
I will just say that. I don't know if anyone wants to add anything, but that's my two cents.
Heather?
I just wanted to make sure I understood what we're going to move to, like this hybrid kind of contract. We're going to have a snow plowing and salting of four elementary schools, three new trucks and one FTE. And then the OMS and the OHS portion, we will still bid out, contract out.
Contract out, sure. Yeah, so when you say three new trucks, eventually, I mean, I'm asleep.
I know, I saw it. I said that, that like.
Sure, I don't want to scare anybody.
No, I know, but like you want by the one shortly.
We do, we do, we would like.
And then I got, I think the other one was slated for like next year.
Yeah.
The next three years, it'll be three trucks at 45 grand apiece, right?
Actually, the trucks are less. The trucks are 30. The attachments and everything else, the salting equipment, brought up an additional 16,000. We don't envision beyond maybe an additional salt box. If we continue to see improvements, we may be purchasing, at the board's discretion, possibly another salt box for the back of the truck. Okay? But at this particular point in time.
Yeah, it's a particular.
Right. A truck is truly, a four-by-four truck, heavy duty, is approximately $30,000 because of the Michigan State School bid that we have, that we have out there. So it's actually, in my opinion, a relatively good deal.
I didn't realize that, excuse me, though.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have, yeah.
Dan?
May I ask the, and I don't want to, Sam said he's not the expert, so may I ask a question of someone who is the expert in the field?
Sure.
Tony? Do you feel as though your staff is going to be able to keep up with it if we have another season like we did last year? That's my concern. My concern is, is we're asking two people essentially to do a lot. And I'm a little bit concerned about hitting those appropriate.
And last year was a lot of salting, as you remember. Because we had a lot of rain and slushy snow and stuff like that. And kind of Heather's and Mary's. And kind of Heather's and Mary's response about the mono-salt effort, putting up, we may be able to control that better, also maybe with the two trucks. And I'll have the ability, and I may have to go out there and do a little plowing myself in there, but you know, the plan is I'll have four trucks ready to go, and there's going to be, you know, maybe some part-time people that I'll have to have to go and get into another truck. If we've got four lots, four trucks, two solvers, yeah, I feel pretty comfortable. We should be able to handle that with the bigger equipment sitting at these two campuses, me and the high school and those. I think I should be pretty comfortable with that.
Corey?
What condition are these other, the 05 and the 09 vehicle in? And the reason I'm asking is, are we better off selling them when they're still in good condition and getting all three new ones now? Or are they still really good condition where we can get another two, three years out of them?
Well, it's very rough. The other one's marginal. I could probably have another season out of the one. I'm hoping, yeah, I'll be able to maybe get three more trucks, but you know, just because budgetary, that's why we're asking for the one that we're spreading out over three years. But the one, yeah, I might have to put a little bit of money in, there's no baggage. There's used plow trucks that have been hard to have used, and these were, these were used for a lot of years. You know, we, on a plow truck, we're probably going to get 10 years on a plow truck if we're just plowing in our district, you know? And the one truck, I know it was being used everywhere, and it was run really hard. And that truck, I'm a little worried about, but the one, the one ton Ford is, it's still in pretty decent shape. I might get a couple of years out. So my plan was to replace it, see if we could replace the Ford, the current truck that I got with the new truck, I think might have a pretty good fleet.
Yeah, so it's kind of, my point is, if we have two or three guys in four trucks, is it, is there opportunity to get rid of a few trucks? You know, maybe if you bought some Dodge Rams in front of you.
All right, in your corner.
We want a plowstove, not just push it from side to side.
I do want to add, I do want to add as well that this was a budgetary item. So Tony, this is not a new subject between Tony and I. Obviously, Tony and I speak daily, not just about this, but obviously operations and pedal. And so this has been a discussion with Tony and I, at least over the last nine, 10 months, frankly. And so within the 1920 budget, I did indeed bake in the dollars to purchase what you have in front of you, should the board decide to go ahead with this.
Anything else? All right, then we'll, yeah?
Just a real simple question. In this type of situation, do we normally pay cash for these, or are they financed?
They are not financed. We normally buy them right out.
Figures, thank you.
All right, well, we'll be seeing a motion on that next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pass, Human Resources?
Just want to thank the board for approving the Sandra Russo, high school Spanish teachers, doing a great job so far this year. Working with Letha to finalize our last teacher hire, social studies teacher over at Bridges. So we were interested in reading some lessons today. So I hope that a recommendation from the board or next paper.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yes, real quick, I just talked with David about, you know, replacing somebody at Bridges, and I think we need to mention that Mallory and Malloy did an outstanding job at Bridges, and as does the whole staff, and I just, I just wanted to just take a second just to let her know that we do appreciate her time and her service here.
Thank you, thank you very much. Student Services?
Nothing this evening.
All right, we have a policy that we looked at last meeting, and so would someone like to look at that as a motion? Yes, please, Heather?
Move to approve a second reading of policy number 5771, search and seizure.
Is there support? Eric, support? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries? Unscheduled audience participation, any white cards out there? All right. We have scheduled activities from the 11th through October 24th, before you. Any clarification, sir?
None.
Would anyone like to make a final board comment? Yes, sir?
Just real briefly, Steve, thank you for the presentation of the surveys. Appreciate that. It really gives us an opportunity to learn more about what the community and the staff, really how they feel about, about what we're doing here, and it gives us an opportunity to ask you the hard questions. So, thank you.
Yes, Dan?
I, I just want to point out something that I talked to Tim about it last, I don't know, maybe it was Thursday or Friday, I can't remember what day it was. But I think we've, we've sat up here now for three years, and we've discussed our parking situation. And it was brought, I was at the JV and freshman football game on Thursday of last week, so I must have called Tim on Friday. Still have a lot of people taking liberties with where they're parking. And the conversation that was going around was, it just doesn't feel as though that it's supported. I want everybody to know that is supported by this board member, and I'm not going to speak for the board, but I'm going to tell you, this board member is very strong about one thing, keeping our students and our staff safe at these events. If there isn't a designated parking spot, you need to go to park where you're supposed to park. Talked with Jordan, he's got some great ideas for making accommodations for folks that are handicapped and need access to the stadium. But in no means does that mean that if, if you see me parking in a spot that's not, call me out. If you see Tom parking in a spot, or anybody up here parking because we feel as though we're entitled, call us out, call us out at a board meeting. It just can't happen. Because it's that important that we keep our kids safe and our, and our coaches and our staff. It's just, it's that important. So I don't want to get on my soapbox, I think I, maybe I may have got a little bit, I don't know, what's the right word, loud about it before, and if anybody was offended, I do apologize, but I just feel very strongly, because it's just not something that we're going to bend on.
Any other final board comments? Very good. Well, we have a motion to go into closed session. Would someone like to make that motion? Dan?
Move to meet in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 8A, to consider the periodic personnel evaluation of a staff member, if the named person requests a closed hearing.
Is there support? Chad, support? Discussion? Roll call vote, right?
Yeah, roll call vote.
Okay, please, Heather?
President Donnelly?
Yes.
Vice President Belisandro?
Yes.
President Bailey?
Yes.
Secretary Schaefer?
Yes.
Rusty Foster?
Yes.
Rusty Griffith?
Yes.
Rusty Henson?
Yes.
All right, very good. So it is 7:28. This meeting, heartbeat adjourned. Have a great day, everyone. All right, it is 8:13, and we're out of closed session, and so we're at item number 16, and we have other. Other. Dan?
So as you all know, my tenure with the board has been outstanding, and I think a couple of years ago, we all signed these, or we instituted these board, board member conflict of interest disclosures, which we all signed at the beginning of the year. And as you all know, I've had a career change, so that is, I think it's important that I make you all aware that I am employed by Birmingham Seal Co., who has done work for the district in the past. What, five, six years, I guess, that I've worked for the district? So I wanted to make that change to my disclosures, so that you all know that I am involved. And I also want you all to know, if you have any interaction with Birmingham Seal Co., please don't direct it to me, direct it to whomever other at Birmingham Seal Co. I don't want you to feel as though that there's any conversations, undue influence on my part, conversations with you all. Any conversations with, anything you all have going on, because I do a lot of work in the area, please let me know. And then the only other thing that I wanted to fill out too, and I checked it off, my mother-in-law works in food services now, where she just accepted a job a couple of weeks ago. And it's really important that we do these things, and we make each other aware of where we stand, and so there's no, so I just want to update everybody on that.
And so from a practical perspective, if we're all of a sudden talking about bids for companies to do asphalt for our parking lot, you'll have to be out of the discussion, you'll abstain from those kinds of discussions. And this disclosure is what tells me as a president to make sure that we do that, right? And that we live up to that agreement. And so, no saying I'm a board president, so get me a deal. Fair? Good? I have one other too. I hope you noticed in the last couple of meetings, I have tried to practice some things to move meetings along. If I don't see, if I see just a motion under someone's thing, there's no reason to have to speak. We, they've already spoke last meeting. So today you saw me go right past a few people and write to the motions, right past a few people, write to the motions, until we had Sam, who had a B to talk about. You saw the last two meetings, do you have a closing comment? You're going to see me starting to exercise and practice doing some of those things that I promised that I would do to make the meeting run efficiently. And I think the one that's going to be the toughest for us is for me to stop a conversation that's digressing. And you're going to have to kind of let me play in there, I might make some mistakes, but if something starts spiraling out, I'm going to, can we, you know, cut it and say we need to bring it back, you know? And in parlamentary, it's point of order, we've spun off the topic and we need to bring it back to the topic, right?
Yes.
And so just know that I'm practicing, and I hope you see that.
I'll just make a little side comment on that. I did notice that, and I think it's, good job.
Thank you.
And I, and I think we need to all remember that this is a board meeting, this isn't